Thank you for coming out on such a lovely evening. We call the meeting to order. Misty, would you call the roll?
David Burris.
Present.
J.R. Huddleston.
Here.
Deborah Johnston. Phil Lukens.
Here.
Larry Pratt.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Present.
Linda Barbell.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, will you stand and join me in allegiance? Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As you probably noticed, the mayor was unable to attend tonight, so as council president, I will decide on the meeting tonight. As we go through the agenda, I will be voting on the items as a council member. In the event of a tie on an item, it will not be able to pass, and I will not vote twice. Also, I would like to ask council members, as they speak, if they would hold and speak directly into the mics, so that the members of the public present can hear our conversation. Again, I'd like to remind the council members to notify the remainder of the council of any items that may be a conflict of interest on the agenda prior to voting on the agenda items. Next, I would like a motion to approve an amended agenda. The city of Hot Springs has received a request by the property owners that had requested a utilities assessment district to disregard their request. That request to disregard is in the information side of your packets, and as a result, we will be removing the 715 public hearing. And item A under resolutions, resolution 20- or 2022-8, will also be removed. Also, under current claims, the amount has changed, thirteen dollars. The current claims for Fall River is on page one. I think that was a double charge, Misty, is that correct?
Are you in the current claims?
I think so.
Fall River is page four, and there was a twenty percent discount applied.
Okay, thank you. And then also on page eight, there was a charge for temperature technology for two thousand seven hundred seventy dollars and seven cents. That was a December expense, so that has been moved to accounts payable. And also on page 10, under innovative office solutions, it was a pack of pens that was canceled for eleven dollars and twelve cents. So the new current claims amount is one hundred nine thousand nine hundred sixty-two dollars and forty-nine cents, and the new accounts payable amount is three thousand ten dollars and seventy-six cents. Three thousand ten dollars and seventy-six cents. One hundred nine thousand nine sixty-two and forty-nine cents. So with that, could I give a motion to approve the amended agenda? I'll give it a shot. A motion to approve the tonight's amended agenda, showing the bills in between, sorry, showing the current claims at one hundred nine nine sixty-two forty-nine, accounts payable at three thousand ten dollars and seventy-six cents, also removing a 715 public hearing meeting, and also removing item A for the volunteer food snacks over your business. Resolution. Resolution, the proposed resolution was contested in Galveston, tonight's party.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of the February 7th council meeting?
I make a motion to approve the minutes from the February 7th council meeting.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I can have a motion to approve the bills in between.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills in between for one hundred thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars and eleven cents.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion to approve the current claims and the accounts payable. Make a motion to approve the current claims, the amount of one hundred nine thousand nine sixty-two forty-nine, and accounts payable at three hundred and ten thousand seventy-six. Did you read how I said?
Three thousand and ten dollars and seventy-six.
No, you said three hundred thousand. Well, there went Christmas, okay. Three thousand ten dollars and seventy-six cents. I apologize. Is there a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we do have a public hearing at 7:10, so we'll move on to communication from the public. Larry David, are you here? Larry? Okay, I don't see Larry here, so we'll move on. The next item we have for communication from the public, and I'm afraid we're going to run into the public hearing, but we're going to talk about it, is we've received two applications to fill the open council position in Ward 4 for the remainder of this term. And so I understand, or make sure I've got my dates right, so I'm going to look at Misty for even nod or have a scared look on her face. But it'll run from tonight through July 5th, which is the first council meeting of the term. So going in alphabetical order, we would like to hear from the two applicants. First, we will hear from Pat Ginsbaugh, and second, from Melanie Wilson. It is 7:07, so Pat, 7:10. If you're still going, I'll ask you to have a seat and then continue.
Thank you. I've called, so bear with me. I'm Pat Ginsbaugh. I've lived in Ward 3 for the last thirty-six years, and this summer I moved to Ward 4, and I live at 1046 Galveston Avenue. I saw the application available to apply for Ward 4 councilman. I saw that Katie Turner had missed five meetings, which kind of surprised me. I let you know that if you decide to appoint me, I make a commitment that I will run for a position for the new council in July, that I'll work hard, I'll try to do what's in best interest of the city, and then I'll listen to my constituents and to the public. I'm part of one of the few lawyers who ever gave out the social numbers, so my clients could call me directly and ask any questions or texts me, and I think that's the best way to promote communication. I sent a letter in, I don't know if you have any questions?
Council, do you have any questions for Pat? Thanks, Pat.
Thanks, Ray.
Melanie, we've only got one less than a minute, so it's been a... Well, if you'd like to hold off until after the public hearing, that'd be fine, too. We've had dead air before, and though it might be uncomfortable up here, it's a hard environment. I'll tell you, it's 7:10, so we'll open up the public hearing for a special sale alcoholic beverage license application from Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for the Chamber Mixer event scheduled March 24th, 2022, at the Shitakwa Artisans Market at 629 North River Street. Is there anybody here from the chamber that would like to speak to this? Anybody from the public have any comments regarding this? Any comments from the council? Hearing no comments, we will close the public hearing at 7:10 p.m. And I would accept a motion to approve, deny, or table this request.
I'll make a motion to approve the special sales alcoholic beverage license application from the Hot Springs Chamber of Commerce for the Chamber Mixer event scheduled for March 24th of '22 at the Shitakwa Artisans Market at 629 North River Street.
Second. Any comments? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Melanie, would you like to come up and talk to us?
I'm on.
Probably couldn't stand that for that.
Hello, my name's Melanie Wilson. I live at 806 Galveston, and I'd like to take this time, for those of you who don't know me on council, my name's Melanie Wilson. I'm married to Todd Wilson, we own the Wilson Life Club, and Fall River Ranch Resort, which is still in construction. I've lived in Fall River County for seven years, and two years of the city lived in Ward 4. I'm sure you guys might wonder why I'm interested in this. This is what I have to say to you guys. I might not be as seasoned as some of the council members. I don't have a degree, but in time, I don't have a last name that's giving me any special privileges or wealth. What I do have is where I feel I'm well for my own money. I'm simply a limited entrepreneur, and I care a lot of trips. I know the jobs found out many. I want to give you the time and patient comfort that I have, and that I deserve. I don't get the upsides, I get overwhelmed sometimes. My mom, daddy told me, you get what you get. I don't know what that is. I'd like to thank all of you guys. Your dedication, also want to thank Haley Turner for her type of dedication. She'll be truly blessed. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Melanie?
Do you plan on running for the seat this summer?
Because I don't think you have time to get emotional, because I'm not a good public speaker, but, you know, it's just, it's kind of wild.
After a while, you want it.
I apologize, I was just feeling like, yeah.
I think you bring some insight, just normal, everyday system insight, that's what we need.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melanie. Thank you, Melanie. Well, before, I just want to thank both Pat and Melanie. I think we're fortunate to have two really good candidates to fill this position, and I thank you both for putting in the time and the effort to fill out the application and the willingness to come before the council and the willingness to run in the upcoming election. So at this time, I'd like, Misty, if you would do a roll call vote, and council, as we go through the roll call, please state which applicant you would vote for to complete the remainder of the term of the open Ward 4 position.
David Burris.
Melanie Wilson.
J.R. Huddleston.
Pat Ginsbaugh.
Deborah Johnston.
Melanie Wilson.
Phil Lukens.
Melanie Wilson.
Larry Pratt.
Melanie Wilson.
Craig Romi.
Melanie Wilson.
Linda Barbell.
Pat Ginsbaugh.
You have five to two for Melanie Wilson.
Congratulations, Melanie. Thank you, Pat. Melanie, would you come to the stage, she's sworn in? Thank you, Pat. Thank you, Pat.
Hi, Melanie Wilson. There's always work that I will support the constitution of the amount of pay. I will support the constitution of the state. The constitution of the state of South Dakota. The constitution of the state of South Dakota. And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs. And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs. And I will faithfully discharge the duties. I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of aldermen of the city of Hot Springs. Of the aldermen of the city of Hot Springs. For the best benefit of the state. Thank you, Melanie. Thank you. And our paperwork. And one of these is for aldermen and aldermen who are in the state. But.
Welcome aboard. We'll continue with some communications from the public. Does, is there anyone from the school board or the school district here that would like to speak to the selection process for the school resource officer? Dennis?
Jackie.
Or not, I'm sorry, Jackie?
Please adjust the mic so it's right at your mouth.
We wanted to thank the council for allowing us to participate in this, and we were very excited to have an SRO on our school who will help us uphold the policies of the Hot Springs School District and keep our students safe and happy.
I know how difficult of a decision it is to make a long-term commitment from a budget standpoint for this, but from a district standpoint, we're looking at a very positive long-term partnership with the city to help keep our district safe. There's a lot of advantages for having an SRO in our district, some of those that are most important to us, certainly are, is the increased safety and security of our students, which is always first and foremost in our minds. One of the things you may not realize is that we have to make an assurance every year to the state of South Dakota Department of Education that we have trusted people on our staff, and we consider the SRO on our staff, where our students can always go to somebody that they feel safe and somebody that they can talk to, so we have to make that assurance to the Department of Education, that every one of our students has somebody that they can go and talk to, and we think the SRO just adds to that type of service that we try to provide to our students. Also, another very important item for us from a district standpoint is to continue to build that positive culture that we're trying to do with the school, and we think the SRO is going to make a huge difference for us. Mr. McMillan being very visible and another positive outlet for our district and continuing to build that positive culture. So we want to thank the board and everybody that was involved in the interview process. We were invited into the interview process, and we certainly appreciate that. We know that this is your hire, and this is your people that you're going to be evaluating, but we'll do everything we can to keep open communications with anything that goes on with this position in our district. So with that, I don't know if anybody has any questions for Jackie or myself.
Jackie, would you mind spelling your first and last name for me, so I get it right in the record, if no one's familiar?
Sure.
It's J.A.C.Q.U.I.B.I.D. Last name is C.H.N.I.P.R.S. Yep, thank you.
Dennis, Jackie, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And tagging on to the end of that, I'd like to read a note that Mayor Nelson prepared regarding the process. Said, "I'd like to thank the following individuals for their work and guidance during the process of selecting the first school resource officer for the city of Hot Springs and the Hot Springs School District. Hot Springs Council members Bill Lukens and J.R. Huddleston, Hot Springs Police Chief Jennifer Win Scott, Hot Springs Police Captain Philip Shively, Hot Springs School Board Member Ryan Walts, Hot Springs Schools District Superintendent Dennis Fisher, Hot Springs Elementary School Principal Abby Karn, Hot Springs School, Middle School Principal Troy Lerts, Hot Springs School District Special Services Director Jackie..."
Schneer.
Schneer, thank you. "...the position of that of the SRO is complex. Some responsibilities will be to provide mentoring, creating partnerships, building relationships, informal counseling, and increase the visibility and accessibility of police within the school community, and to ensure school safety. Over the past several months, through a series of two interview sessions, a total of six applicants were interviewed for the SRO position. The process wasn't rushed. I commend the selection committee for agreeing we would take the time necessary to find the right individual for the position. We did just that and found a candidate we agree on to recommend for the position of SRO for the city of Hot Springs and the Hot Springs School District. I believe that if the council approves Deputy McMillan for the position of school resource officer, the city of Hot Springs and the Hot Springs School District will be well-served with their first school resource officer." Chief Win Scott, did you have some comments you wanted to make on anything?
Hello, anybody? Yeah, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank the school board and everybody involved in the SRO process. I think it's going to be a great thing for the city and the school and the police department in general. I wanted to thank the city council for approving the wage increases for the officers of eligible candidates. So we've got people to hire, so I just want to say thank you and I look forward to everything going forward.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council? Please come forward. And if you would, state your name and address.
Frank Purple, 905 South 6.
I'm just wondering if the zoning map that's online is correct of 2015, is that a current zoning map?
I don't believe it's the most up-to-date.
No, we just had a new update with the 2020 census changes, like last month.
Well, at the airport, I see them added towards zoning since then, and...
I mean, in town, in particular, I'm just wondering what I'm zoning. 905 South 6.
Your Ward 4?
No.
Zone. Zoning. Am I still mixed-use 1? Is this still mixed-use 1?
I would have you contact Scott.
And Scott's only... So the bottom line question I have is, is if it's mixed-use 1, that is a, something that allows retail business, and I'm just wondering if the construction is going to go through town and possible difficulty finding places to eat, I'm just, and I don't have one in mind, but just can, can I put a, like a food cart or something on that lot where Bill's house is that's going to get torn down here directly? Just what I'm wondering, but I saw the map was 2015, and so I needed to start there. Anyway, I don't know, I'd like to get a map that's current online, because I don't particularly have a lot of, I don't usually get to town until after 5 on weekdays, so that I have a chance to get to the noon or seven. So if somebody could get ahold of me and answer those two questions, that'd be great. Thanks.
I don't remember seeing anything come across us when I was on the planning and zoning, and I don't know if you, where it has changed, I don't remember seeing that. So my understanding is it's probably still correct, but we will, we'll have to probably get to it.
Yeah, I asked, called Scott earlier this week, and he didn't know for sure about the bottom line question, but I didn't ask him about the zoning, but when I saw it was 2015, I thought that it may have gotten changed, so anyway, I'd like to know those two questions. Thanks.
I would like to bring to your attention, we do have a food vendor park now across from Evans Plunge with four slots that we will be opening up for first come, first served to choose which slot you want and all that.
And I, and I know that, and I guess the, I guess the underlying point is, is that 1385's torn out for two years. I know there's going to be a lot of traffic come down Sixth Street and then shoot down Garden, and then across the bridge, and we just built, and that's going to be a huge traffic flow, and people are going to get away to Main Street. I just want to, I don't have anything in mind, but I'm just, that's just a general question. I mean, what is allowed, if it says retail, is it retail? If it says service, is that a service? Or do we have to adjudicate every request individually? Or which would then kind of make me think that zoning doesn't really matter? So anyway, those are the questions I have. I don't have any immediate plans, but I do know that traffic patterns are going to change in the next two years dramatically, so thank you. Thanks, Frank.
Frank, because that has your contact information.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Okay, any other communications from the public? Our next item on our agenda is personnel actions. However...
I'd like to make a motion to go into South Dakota, codify the law 1-25-2, executive session.
For personnel?
Personnel.
Is there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we will go into executive session at 7:27 p.m. We'll be back. Show us back from executive session at 7:57. Misty, I may need your help. We have a, one amendment for change to the personnel actions. So can I get a motion to approve personnel actions A through G with a change to item C, changing it from 100% of top of scale to 98% of top of scale? Make a motion for personnel to approve an amended C on personnel, amended to 80, 98% instead of 100%, and do personnel A through G.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. And I do want to just make a note that on item B, Officer McMillan, his first day is the 28th of February, that will be his paperwork day. That will be his paperwork day. His first day in the school will be March 1st. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 2022-9 to amend the citywide fee resolution, the airport fuel, to increase the retail fuel price to 550 a gallon?
Make a motion to approve 2022-9, amend the citywide fee resolution, airport fuel.
Second.
I didn't get that.
That was Larry.
Thank you.
Okay, any discussion? And I do want to say that in my last airport advisory committee report to this group, the committee had recommended that we increase the fuel price to 540 a gallon. In the time since that meeting, the delivered price of fuel increased from 433 to 454 per gallon. Based on this wholesale price increase and the current volatility in the prices, we felt it necessary to increase the retail price to 550 a gallon. And that also puts us still in about the mid-range of our, the airports that we compare ourselves to in a 65 mile radius. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. First item in new business was for discussion only, and I would ask that this item be tabled. This item was discussion only for potential to, for the city to pay for volunteer food, snack, and beverages. This item was put on the agenda at the request of the mayor, and since he's not able to be here to be a part of that discussion, I would like to table it until he can be here.
Make a motion to table item A, new business.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes and the item is tabled as an executive. New business, item B, possible motion to approve and authorize public works engineer to solicit bids for the digester cover.
I make a motion to, to approve and authorize the public works engineer to solicit bids and publish a notice to bidders two times for the 2022 Hot Springs wastewater treatment facility digester cover replacement installation bids will be accepted until 11:00 AM on 3/29/22 and will be open and publicly read at 1:15 PM the same day during the public works committee.
Second. Any discussion? And just, this is the next, is this the final step, Tracy?
Yes.
So we've been working on the digester issue for a long time. We purchased and had the new lid constructed, and so now this action will install that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New business, item C, possible motion to approve a contract 2022-6 between the city of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Main Society for Animal Control and Boarding Services in 2022.
Make a motion to approve contract 2022-6 between the city of Hot Springs and Battle Mountain Main Society for Animal Control and Boarding Services in 2022.
Second. Any discussion? And just a reminder, this is, what this contract does is it takes up the action or the activities that the ACO formally perform. Battle Mountain will provide 24/7 on-call response to all animal control calls. They'll hire their own animal control officer. This does increase the contract up to 2,000, or will now pay $2,000 a month, and this is funded through the eliminated position of the animal control officer. Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Have a motion to approve the establishment of one additional full-time position in the streets department as a maintenance operator 2 in lieu of the abolished position for animal control officer.
Make a motion to approve the establishment of one additional full-time position in the streets department as a maintenance operator 2 in lieu of the abolished position for animal control officer.
Second. Any discussion?
I would point out, if it hasn't already been noted, that there's about $21,000 remaining. That's an estimate. This is plenty of time of that budget, and the position you're approving is an additional 43,000. So you do have $22,000 of unbudgeted expense with this provision.
Well, thank you, Misty. Any other discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Motion, do I have a motion to approve a flat of the bonding tract of Block 20 of the Phillips addition?
I'll make a motion to approve a plant of bonding tract of Block 20 of Phillips addition to Hot Springs, Fall River County, South Dakota, formerly lots 1 and 2 of Block 20.
Second. Any discussion? And what this is, is it's combining lots 1 and 2 on the corner of Jennings and North 3rd Street. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I get a motion and some discussion to authorize the city staff to further research and develop a plan to obtain a license to sell liquor on premises at the Southern Hills Golf Course.
I make a motion to authorize city staff to further research and vote a plan to obtain a license to sell liquor on premises at the Southern Hills Golf Course.
Second. Any discussion or questions?
Mr. Lukens, would you entertain communications for the public on items number F and G before a vote?
Yes. Please come forward.
My name is Greg Faust. I live at 941 Houston Avenue here in Ward 4. For the last three summers, I have served as a clubhouse attendant at the Southern Hills Golf Course. I know for a fact, a fact, that alcohol was on the premises, in a clubhouse, and on the golf course at least once during the summer during a tournament. I know that because at the end of the tournament, at the gathering of the golfers in the clubhouse, I was accosted by a non-member who had been drinking heavily on the course, and I filed a report with Misty, an incident report and a possible request for counseling based upon the, the, the approach of that golfer. That's not the only time that I know that alcohol has been consumed on the course, even though there is a sign in front of the clubhouse saying that nothing can be consumed or brought onto the course except that which is provided under the beer malt beverage license. As it states under number G at the last sentence, the golf course, the golf advisory committee incurred and recommended on February 14th, item number G. I want you also to know that every member of the golf committee is an annual dues-paying golfer at our golf course. Members of the public are not invited to become a part of that committee. And I believe that it should be further discussed with members of the public before considering what, what, what the motion is on number F. I for one would, would welcome participation on the golf committee. And I can say that because I will not be returning to Southern Hills Golf Course as a clubhouse attendant for the 2022 golf season. It's a hard job. And for a man who is 68 years old, I cannot stand for ever, for 25 hours a week as the sole representative at the golf course clubhouse and deal with the kinds of behavior that I've just addressed. I think it's horrendous that the city condones that kind of behavior at our golf course, at our public golf course, and does nothing about it. I'm asking you to consider finding out about it before pursuing any further information on obtaining an alcohol license. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. And thank you for the, in this, for the public's information and just for any clarification of the council meeting. The motion, item F, that we're voting on is not, it is for, it authorizes the city staff to conduct further information, and I will personally encourage the city administrator to include you in that information gathering process. And that's all it is because in discussions with our finance officer, being an on-sale liquor license holder is a very complicated activity. There's a lot of responsibilities to it, and it's certainly something you have to count all the costs in before you get into it. And to my understanding, that's what this motion is about, is to make sure we understand what we're getting into. And, but because it is so intensive, there is, it's so involved, the city administrator didn't want to burn a lot of hours on something that he didn't have authorization to do. But Greg, thank you for your input. Thank you for your concerns, and I agree that the, the circle of folks that are involved in the data record should be adequately wide. So thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to apologize for the city, for you being accosted. It's wrong. I don't like it, and nobody needs to be treated that way. Thanks for bringing it to our attention.
I just want to add one more thing to that, Mr. Huddleston. The person involved, I will not name names, but the reason it was so intense for me was that the person had a career as a professional hockey defenseman.
Any liquor license would be subject to a public year, including this one also. So just so you're aware, if it does move forward, there will be a public year.
This has been tried twice and passed and failed. Me, I know of a couple tournaments that's been out there, and with just beer, I guess it's just beer, there's quite a bit of damage to the golf carts that run into each other and stuff. So if you have hard liquor on top of that, I, I just, I don't think the city needs to go there.
I was just gonna appear with Greg because I think I've sat in city council and heard about public urination problems.
What's your name, sir?
Tournaments.
What's your name, sir?
Name is. 145 North 23rd, Ward 3. But, yeah, so I've heard about public urination here at city council, and now we're talking about adding liquor when we just declined a beer and wine license to sell it down because that's where they're having problems. So it seems like if we're having problems at the golf course, we should add more beer and liquor.
I agree.
I agree. That's why it says further research in here, sir.
Name and address, please.
Jane. Jane Lukens, husband, 312 Menelar Drive. We live on the golf course. The 13th green is right behind us, 14th tee box. For some silly reason, we bargained over this. I keep, I have back issues. So I'm sitting in my chair. It's all windows in the backyard. At my level, I can see the 14, 3, tee box right there. I don't know how many encounters I've watched of urination on the 14th tee box. There's a outhouse on 12, and we're on 13, 14. And I've seen one man stand off, you know, the 14 tee box comes like this, urinating over the edge. And then we had an encounter, well, I've seen others. Dave's heard this story with the mayor, because we went to the, that meeting and said, "What can we do?" Because I wanted to call the cops on him. Well, found out there is an ordinance against public urination. I will call the police next time somebody does this. We were sitting in our breakfast room that just comes out like this. The living room's here and the kitchen and the sitting room is a bay. We're trying to eat lunch, and here's a young man who's urinating, and Bill went out there and said, "Hey, that's not your personal urinal." He starts getting an attitude and F this, F that, whatever. And we are probably the closest house to any of the greens or tee boxes. And this is my home. I cannot not see it because I can see from past all the way up the hill. And I don't appreciate the urination. And having more alcohol, I know that it's just been beer now, wine, not hard liquor. I don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
I agree with you.
Thank you.
Bill? According to the rules of orders, can I remove the vote?
Well, you can still vote, I guess.
It's just to bring down the discussion. The vote can go either way.
Yeah, because.
You can vote either way. You can make it, you can nominate, or you can make a motion to it. At the vote, you can go either way because of discussions and.
And I do understand what people are talking about. I'm looking at the word, it says further research on here. That was my only reason for making a motion on this.
And if we don't get a motion in a second, it dies.
We got a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Wonder if we ought to have a roll call vote on this one this evening? Or, looks like. Let's wait and have a roll call vote.
Everyone understand the vote? What you're voting on?
Yeah, well, a yea vote says we are authorizing the city staff to do further research and develop a plan to obtain a license.
No vote means you don't.
No vote says we don't spend the time to do research or plan.
David Burris?
No.
J.R. Huddleston?
No.
Deborah Johnston?
No.
Bill Lukens?
No.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Craig Romi?
No.
Linda, oh, Linda Marvell?
No.
Melanie Wilson? Almost forgot. Thank you.
Motion fails. Thank you, public. Thank you, council.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Motion in discussion to make changes to the golf course pro shop manager position to a golf operations manager. Do I have a motion?
To make a motion to make changes to the golf course pro shop manager position. Job description has been updated from a golf pro shop manager to golf operations manager in order to include all golf programming functions, course management, marketing initiatives, alcohol training and safety if applicable, and POS training functions. This proposal is to adjust the top of scale for the position from 1514 per hour to $21 per hour exempt. In addition, it is proposed that the manager receive 75% of any lessons with 25% retained by the course. Golf advisory committee concurred and recommended on 14 February of 2022.
Sound good?
Any discussion? And just for the purpose, the intent on changing this is to upgrade the position to someone that can really promote our golf course. What in personnel actions, you saw that our current pro shop manager, or golf, yeah, pro shop manager is leaving in April. What we're told is that a golf course in the Black Hills area should be, most of them are selling 30,000 to 40,000 rounds a year. We sold about 13,000 or 14,000 rounds of golf. And so, we're looking for someone that can really help us promote our golf course. Because every tee time we don't sell is lost revenue. This, the golf course is an enterprise fund, which means it's funded by its own revenue source and only subsidized by the general fund if those revenues are less than its expenditures. So, this is an attempt to bring in someone that really knows how to promote our golf course and increase that revenue flow and improve its position even more than it did last year. I believe last year, did we, did we have to subsidize it in 2021? So, and so we would like, we would like to be banking money every year instead of the general fund as a subsidy source. So, that's what this position is about.
Can I make some comments?
Sure.
I was offered an opportunity to give some feedback regarding the change in job description. I'm not going to go through all of them. I did share them. Deborah Johnston, JR Huddleston, and Bill Lukens, as well as the city administrator, were given the opportunity to read all of them. I'm just going to share some of my thoughts and concerns with the job description and the salary review proposal. The description's very similar to the old one. Even at $21, it's an almost $6 increase for essentially the same job. It lists bartenders, which is not a position we currently have. New positions are established by resolution with council approval. Shouldn't be listed in a job description if it's not an approved position. It mentions monitoring the quality of the course. We do have a golf course superintendent. That's his responsibility. It does list that they will, the position will direct the work of employees and activities of Evans Plunge Mineral Springs and Recreation. Nothing listed about scheduling, performance evaluations, annual inventories, or other duties as assigned. It mentions a golf club and attending activities at other courses. It talks about instructor certification being required, but not what type. We didn't mention working with the golf course superintendent anywhere. I don't understand why. I wonder what hours the new golf course operation manager would be allowed to offer and teach lessons if it's during their regularly scheduled shift. The previous pro shop supervisor manager covered shifts, so I don't know how a new person can do both the work in the pro shop and be out on the course offering lessons. The financials are not finished for 2021 yet. The revenue exceeded expenses by $63,000. The payroll accrual that's not done yet is about $4,000, and the depreciation expense last year was $112,000. In order to balance the 2022 budget approved by council, Southern Hills Golf Course is expecting needing a subsidy from sales tax of $177,344. Even though we don't always use all of this subsidy, it was still needed to pass a balanced budget. This is before any increases. If we're comparing the pro shop manager job to an operational manager, then my position should definitely be compared to that as well. Top of scale should be adjusted to match that, and it also would be comparable to the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs Facility Director. And the comparison to the South Dakota average golf course manager salaries from Zibya would not be for municipal golf courses, which are very different. And again, I mentioned, we do have a golf course manager already in Jason. I don't feel that this type of increase is justified or can be supported with the current golf course revenues. I like the idea of allowing a pro shop manager to earn extra money by offering lessons, but I believe it needs to be clearly stated that this would be during their own time and not during the time they're supervising or working at the pro shop. I do thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share those concerns with you.
A question for you. If the, if the job description for the proposed golf operations manager was revised to address the issues you've brought up, because you have brought up a number of things that are concerning, would that alleviate some of your concerns?
Absolutely, and still have concerns around the financing.
Absolutely. And job description, from what you just said, it's hard for me to believe that we, as it's read, job description has been updated. If you don't have answers to some of those questions, then I don't understand how it could be described as updated.
Well, it's asking you to update it. They are approved by council. So, that this is his proposal to update it, you would agree to it or not?
Well, I think all that should be already figured out if we're looking at changing to this position. You're talking about making a decision without having half of the information. And then with that, I'm not going to fly.
That's why I'm sharing my concerns. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
I don't know what I feel, so.
Let everybody else know.
It's a long discussion.
Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote on this one.
David Burris?
No.
JR Huddleston?
No.
Deborah Johnston?
No. I'd like him to come back with another proposal.
Bill Lukens?
No.
Larry Pratt?
No.
Craig Romi?
No.
Linda Marvell?
No.
Melanie Wilson?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you, council.
Thank you all. Again, thank you, Mr..
Appreciate it, Mr.. And I just want to say, I appreciate what Jeff is trying to do, but as always, I appreciate that our finance officer does her job also. And that allows us to do our job, which is no easy. New business, item H. Can I get a motion to approve the purchase of 300 garbage totes from Toder at a total cost of $24,818.59?
I would like to make a motion to approve the purchase of 300 garbage totes from Toder at a cost of $24,818.59. Approval exceeds budgeted amount by $7,400 to be funded by future supplemental appropriation from the unrestricted net position in the solid waste fund 612.
Second. Any discussion?
Well needed. Are they're needed?
Yes.
Are we going to add that $7,000 something?
Yes, there is available funding in the solid waste fund. We actually pushed for 300, not 200. 200 would get us by, but shipping was over 6,000. So, we need to do more than just get by.
At this, at this point, we need to up, up the amount just for the simple fact of breaking the cost and get ahead of whatever increases are coming in the next year. And just as a reminder, the 612 solid waste fund is an enterprise fund, so it also has its own revenue stream, which we all get to contribute to monthly. And we budgeted in the 2022 budget, $17,500, which is, would almost cover this, but the shipping was something we thought we were going to be able to work a better deal on. That didn't happen. The shipping on this is $6,068.59. For what most of that, it's $6,068 shipping, so. Any other questions or discussions?
We also added that budget a couple of two free dump weeks, so.
Yeah.
And those are a major cost to the city.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. New business, item J. Can I get a motion to set a public hearing?
Make a motion? Make a motion to set a public hearing on 3/7/22 at 7:10 p.m. on the transfer application from Misty River Tavern LLC for the retail and on-sale liquor license previously owned by Consort Corp., new business as Bergen County, and used at 705 North River Street.
Second. Any comments or questions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the travel training request for Misty Summers Walton to attend the Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association quarterly meeting in Hermosa?
I'll make a motion to approve travel training request for Misty Summers Walton to attend the. Black Hills Area Finance Officers Association quarterly meeting in Hermosa on 3/9/22.
Second.
Are you spending it on?
No.
Any other discussions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the travel training request for Police Officer Jack Peterson?
Make a motion to approve the travel training request for Police Officer Jack Peterson to attend Rasmup progressive prostitute training in Pierre, South Dakota on 4/25/22 to 4/29/22. It's a date change.
Second. And again, this was approved earlier. This is a date change only. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports. Admin Finance, JR.
Our next admin finance meeting will be on Monday, March 7th, 1 p.m. at the Mueller Center.
The next airport advisory committee meeting is Friday, March 4th at 8:30 a.m. at the airport. And just to note, this is a date change for this month only. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Larry?
Next meeting at the Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District will be March 10th, 7 p.m. at the Mueller Center. Everybody's invited.
Thank you, Larry. Historic Preservation Commission, Deb?
Next meeting is Wednesday, March 2nd at 5 p.m. here at the Mueller Center, and everybody is welcome.
Thank you, Deb. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Linda?
Hey, I'm not going to let you guys off so easy. All right. The Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met February 10th, 2022, at noon at the plunge. Committee Chair was Linda Marvell. Committee members present were Chris Hansen, Kathy Wren, Akoya Zimiga, Troy Lurs, Tom Nas, Allison Ritter Bush, Barry McNair, and absent was Mara Smith. Discussion and update of the Hot Springs High School collaboration on training and classes from Troy. He is working on it and has a meeting with the PE instructors on 2/11/22. PE standards are being ratified perhaps by next fall, and he's working with Dennis Fisher. Only high school students in the program initially, and he will present more information by the April meeting. A summary of staff raises thus far. Wage increases were approved by the city. Committee members still felt that annual bonuses should be considered, perhaps internal bonuses such as t-shirts, punch cards, et cetera, if the monetary bonuses won't be considered. A review of saves from Akoya. One save was conducted on an experienced young swimmer coming off the slide that got separated from his mat and was pulled out by a lifeguard. The required safety videos were watched and lifeguard classes were completed. The closure updates, the facility will be closed March 7th through the 20th, 2022. A list of projects were presented by Tom. Rasmussen Engineering will be doing the exhaust fans. The electrician will follow behind that. Tile the steam room with rock tile bottom. The ceiling was not addressed at this time. Chains on the swim rings will be examined. Grab bars at the hot tubs will be replaced by Mike Summers. Dry sauna repair, the wooden benches. Regrow some of the floors. The frog slide door will be addressed. The frog slide and whale painted. We'll clean, sanitize, and remove the algae buildup from the pool walls. Observation deck will be power washed. The steam room, they will install a different shower system. The membership drive will be conducted through March and April. The next meeting will be April 14th, 2022, noon at the Evans Plunge Mineral Springs, since they will be closed March 7th through 20th.
Did you say April 14th?
Yes, for the next meeting.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Linda?
Did anybody get a hold of the streets out and see if they can make the railings? Save the city?
I have no idea because it was just presented as a done deal.
I think that we need to start talking to our own department, see if they can make that to save the taxpayer money. My opinion.
Arcs Rec, beautification and cultural development. Larry?
These were the notes from February 2nd meeting. Meeting started at 2 p.m. Seven people were in attendance. Barton Laurie from Parks and Cemetery, Kathy from REC, Chris from Mueller Center, Gerald from Committee, and Deb Madroski were there. No power for the month in Butler Park. Black Hills Pirates working on pole cemetery, with the cemetery, working on a computer version of cemetery map to merge with city map site to locate graves easier. City administrator's working on getting more help for cemetery. REC update, Kathy's working on seven different projects. Need help with swimming instructors, need certified instructors. Information is on the website. Pickleballs on Tuesday, 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. The entryway to tennis courts needs signage. Discussion only in Butler Park softball field. Gerald asked for a site visit from city administrator regarding the softball field. And signage for the road project was asked by Gerald and Chris in regards to Martin Park and Mueller Center activities during this time. Meeting ended at 3 p.m. Next meeting will be March 2nd, 2022, Wednesday at the Mueller Center.
Thank you, Larry. Any questions for Larry?
2 p.m.?
Second.
2. Thank you.
Yes, yes. Okay, planning and zoning commission, Deb?
Uh, the commission met Wednesday, February sixteenth at six oh five at the city hall, uh, presided by James Forbord. Members present were James Forbord, Don Olstead by a conference call, Christine Heidebrink, and Allison Ritter Bush. Staff present was Scott Sogi, Kerry Pyle, and myself. Guests present were Dwayne Whitney, Larry David, Sue Freary, Sharon Calvles, Bonnie Barrett, Justine Grisius, and Sarah Beckham. Under new business, Bonnie Barrett of one oh five North Third Street, a lot line division. Uh, that was approved tonight on tonight's agenda, um, to remove the center line on the plat for one oh five North Third Street, create a single parcel to make it appropriate to build on. It does not affect any neighbors and there are not any easements or, or water issues. And that was approved, and we approved it tonight. Uh, number two was doing Whitney of one twelve North Chicago. That's, uh, the Stan Nace old building across the alley from the, um, post office. He is, he recently purchased the building for the purpose of converting it into an Airbnb rental with a one rental unit. The property is in general commercial zone and with the historic district. Mr. Whitney said he will attend the next Historical Preservation Committee, Commission meeting. The bid occupancy tax was discussed, which would be owed to the city. Heidebrink clarified that property would need to remain on a commercial property in the case of it being sold in the future. So it would be treated as like a motel rental. Uh, motion was, uh, to recommend and approval was, um, given. Number three was in Eric Robbins, South twenty-third Street, an addition of the Goddard addition. Um, the owner was not present but is developing the area. And Sogi had photos of the property. This is not the first owner of the Goddard addition to present plans and ideas to the city. The committee members agreed the owners need to get together and have a replat completed and create a road district, so no action was taken. Marvin Underwood of one oh nine South twenty-third, um, requesting a carport in the front yard. No one was present to represent the request, so that was not addressed. Sharon Calvles, fifteen oh nine Albany Avenue, easement inquiry. Explanation by Mrs. Calvles that the family is wanting to divide the land among family members. There is a water tower belonging to the city on the property with a two-lane track across the property with a locked gate. The water tower has a security fence around it. There was an easement draft done several years ago prior to nineteen ninety-one when the land was purchased. There is not a recorded easement with the register of deeds. The current two-lane track is in a different location from what was originally drafted. It was determined that there needs to be a legal agreement between the city and the Calvles family with a written easement dedicating a road to the water tower. This will be initiated by engaging a surveyor to divide the property and create the access to each parcel with a legal written description. Recommendation was for the Calvles family to make contact jointly with the city's administrator and the surveyor as the next step and to get legal survey worked out. Cannabis cultivation to be included in the city ordinance. David, Larry David, um, was to present that tonight. Um, Larry David was there, the commission, um, representing Dakota Kind LLC, explained they're seeking to establish within the city of Hot Springs a medical cannabis dispensary and an indoor hypoponic medical cannabis cultivation operation in accordance with the rules of the South Dakota Medical Cannabis Law and the South Dakota Department of Health. The principles of Dakota Kind LLC are appealing to the city of Hot Springs to provide a working solution for the cultivation facility as currently only two medical cannabis dispensaries are allowed within the city limits. Motion by Ritter Bush, seconded by Olstead, to recommend to the city council that the council review ordinance twelve thirty-five and twelve thirty-six to amend to include cultivation, testing, and manufacturing of the medical cannabis. Number seven, late to the agenda, Justine Grisius of three twenty-three South Twenty-second Street. Needs clarification of easements and setback on the property. Ms. Grisius explained she is needing to put up a ten-by-twelve foot shed, but needs to know where it can be located on her lot. Sogi added that the lot lines are not clearly marked and there also is an obvious drainage issue to work with. Olstead stated there is a lot pin in the sidewalk to assist with clarifying lot lines. Setback at the rear of the property is five foot from the lot line. Sogi added that he would help supervise the placement of the shed. Ms. Gris, Ms. Grisius commented on unfinished developing work in, excuse me, in the R O W and lot drainage to the neighbor's property that was part of the builder's responsibility per the Halt Homes R F P request for proposal contract. She is concerned that she will be held responsible for the proper maintenance of the unfinished area. It was said by the commission that Halt Homes needs to finish their work per contract. Under old business, additional dwelling units is an ongoing discussion regarding options. Sogi handed out copies of an A D U development in Rapid City for members' consideration. And number two, annexation, ongoing discussion with reference to the three-mile limit and plating. Commission members agreed to look into budget funding for acquiring professional assistance and expertise in regards to city annexation. The purpose being able to annex without members' impact on property owners. The meeting adjourned at eight oh six P M. The next one will be March sixteenth, Wednesday, at six P M city hall.
Didn't it, didn't it change to seven P M now again? I thought the bottom of your minutes say that.
Let's see, oh, yes, I'm sorry. Time change, seven P M.
Asian switch, right? The Asian six in this room and summer second.
Seven P M city hall, March sixteenth.
Thank you, Deborah. Any questions for Deborah? Okay, public safety, public safety will meet Thursday, March third, two P M at the Mueller Center conference room, all are welcome. Public Works, Dave Craig?
Public Works was February fifteenth at Mueller Center. Present with Darrell Wells, Bob Nelson, Dave Burris, self, Deborah Johnston, Tracy Bastian, Scott, Jeff was there for about a half hour. We started with, uh, communication about handicap parking across the city hall. It snowed real bad, they plowed the snow and covered up that handicap parking where people can't use it. So we talked about it and they talked to the city staff to see if they could keep it cleared out for the snow. And brought up that we think there needs to be one in front of city hall. New business, we talked about police morality agreement with Hyman, nothing yet. They haven't contacted us and we have contacted them. Contract snow removal, we talked about that. Dave and I want to get together with Jeff because Jeff wants to do, write, write something up and we're gonna write up an agreement and get that covered so we can go forward with it. Stomach, street wall, Tracy's gonna go look at it and see if we can fix it or not. I'm sure we can, or the county needs steward who, somebody needs. Street maintenance, trimming trees in alleys, the city's working on those right now. Although they have been, so it's snow, but living, going up and down the alleys, working on it. Bowel mountain, the millings on it scheduled for June twenty twenty-two. Update in valley, new drive grain needs, that'll be in the spring when we do something about it. Burning brush pile, it'll start at three o'clock in the morning. We'll only be burning one brush pile from now. Delphi tank and street job, they dropped a ball on that. I'll go in tomorrow and talk to Misty about that. Bye, Paul. Waste project treatment improvement update, March twenty-ninth is the bid opening for putting lid on the digester. Digester lids here, so they're gonna be opening it, public work. Code enforcement. We talked about the code enforcement, especially this current survey. And we're supposed to have an update and there was not one. So the mayor asked to get one by March first. Okay. Two forty-three North River, Fowler Chrome Building, search warrant, second letter was sent. That's all done and said, isn't it?
Yeah, they already made entry.
So we could probably take that off our list. Old business, we talked, talked about the bump outs and big bats on Main Street. Talked about putting water into that pod, the bump, bump out, not pod, bump up that's gonna be there. Talked about DOT railings, sidewalk addition, the plans on Main Street. And we're hopefully, we'll be putting a railing on top of the wall on the other end from the, where the suspended sidewalk pins to Minnacata. We're gonna try to put a railing on top of that wall to make it say. North Harbor cleanup, hopefully we'll do some of that this summer. Need to build another road down in the river and then we have to get rid of it once we're done. The tolls were ordered, we talked about it tonight. Talked about the turkey problem in town. Jim Nakuda's called me half a year now, I brought it up, we need to start doing something about that either with game fishing parks or something because him and his wife counted over three hundred turkeys in their backyard that just told out their lawn and stuff, so we need to do something somehow. I had to talk to Larry because we had quite a few people calling about the city partially-owned landfill in Edgemont where a lot of people's off on weekends and it's cold weekends. So we'd like to see if there's some way we can get like a even a half a day Saturday to have a moment where the public can go there and use it. So we'll see what happens. Our next meeting, March first, Mueller Center, at one o'clock. Any questions, Craig?
I have a question on the contract snow removal. Is that for all the snow removal in the city or is that just to?
No, that's not the city, that's.
Okay, guidelines.
Private contractors.
Perfect, thank you.
There's a issue where.
Good question.
Private contractors are going and doing whatever services are required of them and debris ends up on the street. And the ones that are catching, um, heck over it is our city employees. So we want to write, write up some parameters and get that a little more under control so the city knows, and they also would be, um, working with the city in a sense per se so we can rectify the problems that we're having for quite a few forms every time. I would like to add, if anybody else has any questions, but I would like to add that, um, as Craig said, um, three o'clock in the morning tomorrow, we will be lighting up the brush pile. We're only, we, we know a lot of the citizens notice there's two big brush piles. We will only be burning the center pile. I will never allow any other place of burning, that is a best controlled area. We do have a second pile, it's up against the hill, but once in the one, it's in the middle where we burn, is done and taken care of, then we will move that pile there so it can be safely controlled. If you want to come to a fun lean roast, you're more than welcome. Three o'clock in the morning, St. Cruz will be there, I myself will be there. Wanting to do this really early in the morning, that way if we have a weather change or anything like that come up, um, we get most of it done before people are hitting the road, going to work. That way we can keep this under control like we do every other time. Any, any, uh, complaints or anything like that can refer to, uh, city hall and then we'll come back to.
Dave.
Public Works. I'm, I'm putting it out there because, uh, I want everybody to know how we do this. This is done with, in conjunction with businesses that are in that area with highways being taken into consideration, while the fire department, city fire department, all those dispatch will be notified first thing this morning, or tomorrow morning. And, uh, so I just wanted anybody to have any comments, you're more than welcome to call city hall. They'll get back to us. That's all I have to add.
Any other questions for Craig and Dave? I don't believe we have any report from Southern Hills Golf Course. So, Misty, is there a finance officer report?
Sure. Thank you. Just like to remind the public that nominating petitions can be circulated for upcoming twenty twenty-two municipal election beginning March first. Uh, that's mayor and four council seats up for, uh, election. And the election this year will be on June seventh and will combine with the county and the school. Uh, we have posted the required notice of vacancy. It'll be published in the paper two times in the legal section. Jeff also wrote a very nice article for the newspaper. And we did put a notice on the city water bills, hoping to get this information out to the public so everyone's aware. I was asked to give you an update on the twenty twenty-two contingency. Uh, we did budget for seventy-five thousand. We are down to about twenty-four thousand five hundred and fifty, uh, as left. That's including an estimate of twenty-five thousand for the residential tax rebates. I have asked the county to help me get a better estimate on that, but just at twenty-five thousand, uh, we have twenty-four five fifty left. I wanted to review some cost estimates with the council and the public. I want you to remember this number, eight point eight million dollars. That is the total number of projects that we have coming up, uh, that you've approved. And I'm gonna go over those quickly for you. Some of them are estimates with our best guess, but eight point eight million dollars is the number I want you to remember. Uh, the clubhouse foundation repairs, we're estimating a hundred thousand. Depot electrical repairs, fourteen thousand. Uh, we did get a grant for the preliminary engineering for our Minnacata Bridge. The city share of that is twelve thousand one hundred. Then we have replacement costs. You remember what it costs to replace the Jennings Bridge? They've told us the Minnacata Bridge is in, uh, just as bad shape and so after our P E is done, we'll be looking to replace that bridge. I don't have any estimate for the replacement cost in that eight point eight million. Mueller Center roof repairs estimated at a hundred thousand. Our H VAC issues here are ongoing. I have no estimate included in that number for those ongoing repairs. North River Street paving in front of Evans Plunge, we've talked about and agreed. Moving forward, trying to get that project done in conjunction with the road project. Preliminary estimates were five hundred thousand, reviewing these numbers. estimates were five hundred thousand. Reviewing these numbers with Tracy, the new estimates are about one point four million. The design alone, which we've already approved the contract for, is twenty thousand. The community access road grant project, we've received grant funding for that. It's up around the school. It's to repair the roads up around the school. We plan to go out for bids for that this spring and hope to start in September. The road portion, the city share is three hundred and forty-four thousand. That's with the estimates we projected before these cost increases that we're seeing with all our projects. And in order to get that grant, we also added two utility projects to that. The estimate for the water is sixty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars. That's out of city money. The wastewater estimates are a hundred and thirty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's out of city money. Again, those estimates were prepared before these significant increases. We have the additional water and wastewater infrastructure improvement from Dale's to Minnacada Bridge that we talked about. The last couple council meetings, our estimate is an additional four hundred thousand to include that. We have the lighting and wayfinding signage, four hundred and twenty thousand for lighting, thirty thousand for wayfinding signage estimated to go with the road project of our sidewalk, the suspended sidewalk. You remember we got two point eight million dollars from the state. The bid came in that we accepted at three million nine hundred and four thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars. That's about one point one million dollars short of the funding we already received. Plus, there's a four hundred and eight thousand dollar design and construction engineering cost that we agreed to with that. Our water and wastewater infrastructure improvements with the road project came in at one point seven million. The tea hangers at the airport, eight thousand. The secondary clarifier suite project at the wastewater treatment plant, about a hundred thousand. We talked a little bit about the installation of the lid. We haven't paid for the lid yet. That's a hundred and eight thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars that was approved. Replacement estimates are about a hundred thousand. We haven't got those bids in yet. The water project, the state revolving fund loan water project for the new tower and lines, we have no idea what that's going to cost us, but we did approve A E two S to do some design engineering. And that cost originally was fifteen thousand eight hundred, but after our public hearing, we had some changes. So there may be a change to that with increased expense. And so those totals equal that amount. I'd add that our twenty-twenty-two total cash applied to balance our budget was four hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We added in twenty-twenty-two, two new debt payments. That totals seventy-two thousand three hundred a year as an estimate. And we have to decide what to do with our street sweeper in twenty-twenty-three to buy out our leases, about seventy thousand. None of those last three are included in that figure. I want you to remember. I just wanted to go over those. Thank you, Bill, for providing me the preliminary estimated expenditures we had worked on last year. We've added a significant amount to those.
You're welcome.
I wanted to give you an update on the work we've been doing on the audit. I haven't got to spend as much time as I'd like on it. We stopped leave accruals to post, property and equipment updates for all funds, including depreciation and the S D R S accruals. Final expenses were approved at this meeting. We still had some accounts payables. Revenues will be done collecting at the end of February, and then I'll start working on the annual report to present to you in May. And then I also wanted to remind you all that you are invited to the annual district meeting. I sent out an email on the twenty-fifth of January. I'll be sharing that information with our new council member. Please let me know if you're interested in attending, and we'll take care of your reservations.
For a second, Derek, I thought you were going to say a public meeting. You're invited to a public meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Misty. Any questions for Misty? Very well. Tracy, I know you, Jeff was working very hard getting here and the airlines did.
Yeah, Jeff did not provide me with a city administrator report to read this time, I think because of his travel issues. So I don't have anything from him.
Okay. And as you see, there is no mayor and therefore no mayor's report.
Make a motion adjourn.
Sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.